December's Howard County Council Meeting. If you'll all rise and join Councilman Alexander.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Kethburn?
May I be in prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this afternoon to praise those who have been here with you. Carry on. For you always with us. Trust in you. And you with us. Right decision. So thankful that you're in our lives.
Amen.
Again, thank you all for being here for December's Howard County Council Meeting. This will be the last meeting, the last council meeting of this year. And our first order of business will be to approve the regular meeting minutes for the council meeting for November. Everyone's had an opportunity to go through them. Is there any, if there's no questions or comments, I will accept a motion.
Mr. President, I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Motion's been properly made and seconded by Councilman Faulkner and Councilwoman Lake. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you very much. Our next order of business will be to address the additional appropriations. Auditor Jessica Seacres is not here today and her first deputy, Mackenzie Jackson, is filling in and like the old welcome, Mackenzie, and floor's all yours.
Okay, so ordinance number 2024-8CCO-48, additional appropriations. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the 2024 annual budget, now therefore be it ordained by the County Council of Howard County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the state. County General Fund, Auditor Council Insurance, $400,000. IT Travel and Training Reduction, $4,000. Total County General Fund, $396,000. Lit Economic Development Fund, land, $2,200,000. Total Lit Economic Development Fund, $2,200,000. Lit Special Purpose Fund, Auditor Council Insurance, $165,000. Jail Institution and Medical Supplies, $20,000. Total Lit Special Purpose Fund, $185,000. Cumulative Capital Development Fund, IT Communications, $4,000. Total CumCap Development Fund, $4,000. Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, Buildings and Structural Repair, $106,263.24. Total Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, $106,263.24. Lit Correctional Facilities, Meals for Prisoners Reduction, $20,000. Total Lit Correctional Facilities Fund Reduction, $20,000. Public Health Crisis Response Fund, Part-Time School Liaison, $10,122. Other Supplies, $57,940. Other Services and Charges, $20,000. Professional Fees, $51,938. And Equipment, $25,000. Total Public Health Crisis Response Fund, $165,000. Total Additional Appropriations for All Funds, $336,263.24.
Thank you very much, nicely done.
Thank you.
Our first presenter will be Mackenzie.
Yes, back up again.
Yeah, you want to explain to us about the insurance?
Yeah, um, so usually at the end of the year, we have to budget for, ask for an additional appropriation for more money due to fluctuating in employees. It's hard to determine how much we'll need in the fund for the year, so yeah.
Just kind of making a little cushion, make sure to make it to the end.
Yes, yes, get us through the end of the year.
Yeah. And that is for the, out of the general fund, that's $400,000. And also, here. The Lit Special Purpose, same thing, only it's $165,000 there. And I think that just about covers that. Any questions or comments about the insurance, general fund or lit? Thank you, nice job. Our next presenter will be IT Director Jeremy Stevens.
Hello, good evening.
Welcome.
The, I'm here tonight to request additional appropriation out of the CumCap Fund, any amount of $4,000 for the communication account. That is to account for increases for the monthly bills that have occurred this year. And this is just to pay the December's bills. To offset that, I know it's a different fund, but I have two funds. I like to make sure I don't go over budget. I know they're two separate funds, but so I'm asking reduction of the general fund, $4,000, so that I am not over budget in my total budget, if that makes sense. So that's what I'm here to do today. The change has already been accounted for in next year's proposed budget.
Yeah. And it's essentially a transfer, only it's not a transfer because we're from different funds.
Yes.
Different taxing funds. But it's essentially just transfer. You're taking $4,000 out here and going to put it over there to get you to the finish line.
Yeah, roundabout transfer, how about that?
Yeah, yeah, in a way. Any questions or comments for?
I just appreciate him doing that, okay? I mean, living within your budget that was approved for 2024, thank you.
I do my best.
I know, thank you very much.
Do a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you. Our next presenter will be Commissioner Jack Dodd.
Good evening.
Commissioner, welcome.
Thank you for having me. I'm going to read a statement, I know on and off here. But today, the Commissioners are requesting an additional appropriation of $2.2 million to purchase 48 acres just west of the county jail as a site for the potential construction of a new county jail. This request comes after 10 months of preparation and planning by the Howard County Jail Committee. I want to thank Sheriff Jerry Asher, Jail Commander Captain Matt Deckard, County Commissioner or County Councillors Darrell Maple, Brett Sanders, Frank Faulkner, and County Attorney Alan Wilson for their hard work that got us to this point. In the span of three months, from October 2023 to January of 2024, the American Civil Liberties Union filed two lawsuits against the county alleging overcrowded and unsanitary conditions at the Howard County Jail. While one lawsuit was voluntarily dismissed without prejudice earlier this year, the other remained ongoing until late last month, when a private settlement agreement was reached during mediation before a federal court judge. The details of that agreement will be made available after it has been signed by all parties and approved by the Honorable Judge Ismore, who's a federal court judge. As you may recall, months prior to these lawsuits, the county commissioned a federal or a feasibility study and needs assessment for the county jail that found it was, in general, a fair to poor condition that many of its components are outdated and in need of replacement or inadequate and that significantly more beds were needed. Since then, the county has been proactively planning and taking steps that we believe will protect our county taxpayers and prevent additional lawsuits. Our request today of an addition, of an additional appropriation of $2.2 million to purchase this land as a site for the potential construction of a new county jail is the next step in that pursuit, and we respectfully ask for your consideration and approval. I'll be happy to answer your question.
Well, by golly, this is the day that has been in the back of our minds for a long time. Done everything we can to avoid destruction of a new jail. We've added a robust work release program, a magistrate's court, added on additional personnel with prosecuting attorney and a public defending attorney to staff the magistrate's court, along with two recorders. And despite our best efforts, we hold the same level of prisoners at the jail and we house about 90 of them, 80 to 90, outside the county every day.
Currently, yes.
Yeah. So we understand this is just this side of a court order to our advantage, giving us some say in this a little bit. And this is that day we've been hoping not to come.
I'd like to share some of the verbiage used down at the federal court when many of us was there. Every step closer we get to the trial date, county loses more and more control over this issue. Every step, and we've been progressing closer and closer to that federal trial date. And by every step, we continue to lose control. And we don't want to lose control of this. That would not be good for our taxpayers or our county. I've said this before, nobody, and I mean nobody, wants to build a new jail. Nobody. And I'll reemphasize that, nobody wants to do this. But here we are. So in purchasing this property, as I stated in the statement, we are one step in preparation for, this is an ideal piece of property for the county. It's directly to the west of our current jail. So I'm asking for your approval in this additional appropriation.
Questions or comments for Commissioner Dodd?
I want to comment from me, Commissioner Dodd, and also Alan. Thank you for your hard work in securing an agreement on that property. That took some good work and good convincing, but thank you for getting that across the finish line.
Thank you. It was a lot of hard work by a multitude of people.
The original price was 3.5, is that right?
Well, we have signed a purchase agreement. We are awaiting Phase One, Phase Two, environmental, which must be done before this deal is completed. We want to make sure that environmentally, the property is clear. So we've started the Phase One, Phase Two, environmental research into it. I'd rather wait before I answer that question. The total cost, including expenses, should be about 2.2.
Okay, okay. So do you know when you'll know that it's, that the land is safe to use or?
The Phase One, that is like research, they'll research the property to see what's been there. And depending upon that, will tell us if we need to do Phase Two. That should take probably roughly around 30 days.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Dodd, thank you very much. Appreciate your leadership and thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.
Sheriff Asher?
Who do you have with you today?
My daughter Amelia.
Amelia, I need you. Apparently not.
The Commissioners' grandkids could probably do it.
Well, mine should be easier than the last one and she's not ready to jump in here yet. Maybe next time, how about that, we'll get it. So I want to do, basically want to transfer as well. So what we need to do is take $20,000, or yeah, $20,000 out of 1233, Fund 33400, Meals for Prisoners, and our institution medical supplies has gone up considerable. We want to transfer or basically additional appropriation into 11140380, Fund Number 23350, Institution of Medical Supplies. Take $20,000 out of meal money and put it into Institution Medical Supplies.
This is very similar to what Jeremy did with IT.
Trying to stay within budget, so we're moving our money around.
Thank you very much.
One question is, has the cost of food gone down or just because we're housing a few less inmates, you have a little more wiggle room?
That's it, housing inmates outside.
Okay, that makes sense.
Food has definitely not gone down.
I didn't figure, but I just.
Maybe, maybe, maybe in the future, we'll see.
Or maybe you're just not feeding them as much.
No, no, we're feeding them the same as we always have. Yes.
Any questions or comments for Sheriff Asher?
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any special Christmas meals that you serve out there, something like that?
I thought it was done. Yes, we'll have a, we have a Thanksgiving meal and then we'll have a Christmas meal. And then we also, this coming Saturday, we have Cops for Kids Shopping, Old Fashioned Shop with the Cops, so that's going on Saturday. We also have Christmas behind bars. So we'll have quite a few churches. Tim and Barb Tranberger are chaplains at the jail, so they organize that. We'll have a lot of churches come in and we'll have church service, some singing, some church service, some prayer for anybody that wants to come, different units come down individually, and they always have a present for them. So they'll have a bag of shampoo, candy, a comb, pencils, something like that. So every inmate will get a Christmas present, if you will, too. So that's coming this Saturday and then Christmas Day, we'll have, I don't know what Tom's going to whip up for them, but we'll have something.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Excellent.
Our next presenter will be Highway Director Amber Toll. Welcome.
Thank you. I have one additional that I would like to ask for. This is for our buildings and structures. This amount, $106,263.24, is the Highway Department's portion of our new salt barn construction. So our new salt barn is being constructed, for the most part, by the Stormwater Department. They are, they have some grant money and they have offered to build this for us. We were a little bit over what they, their grant fund was, but we do have some money in our budget that we would like to put towards that. It is fully constructed, we're waiting on a couple utilities to be hooked up and then we will be good to go. So we wanted to wait till we had exactly what that number was going to be. And we've had two just very small change orders, those have been included here, and that's the bottom dollar that we owe.
So that will be, you'll be utilizing that this winter?
Yes, yes. So as soon as our electric, electricity gets hooked up, waiting for that and our water line to be just turned on essentially, we will move all of our salt into that building and we will start using that. Ready to go. We're excited about it. It's been a long time coming. Yes, it's been a long time coming. So we're also, as soon as the electricity gets hooked up, our brine equipment will be installed as well. So we will be starting our brine operations. So it's something that's very exciting, very new for us. There will be a learning curve with that operation, but I am confident that it will save us time and money and keep our roads a lot cleaner, a lot quicker. So we're excited.
That salt barn in the same property area where you are?
It is, it's just west of where our current building is. And it's bigger than our current building and it's a building that we are going to be able to drive in and get loaded internally and then drive out. So all of our contaminants will be contained within the building. That was kind of part of the stormwater function or partnering with that is to make it a lot more environmentally sound. Because currently, our salt barn is pretty small and just three-sided, so kind of gets rain inside there, there's a little bit of washout, some of that runoff gets, where it shouldn't go. So now everything is going to be contained and we're pretty excited about it. So almost there, very close.
Amber, thank you for coming in and sharing that with us.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Next presenter will be Health Department Director James Vest.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I would like to request additional appropriation of the $165,000 of, which is the final amount for that grant that we received this year. That grant is officially over, but this is appropriating that money and something we can just continue using until we spend it all down. So we're just looking to appropriate it in those five items. I requested, I do have one correction. I mistakenly put 12700 Part-Time School Liaison. It should be 12705 Full-Time Liaison. We do not have a part-time school liaison, so we're looking at transfer, yeah, appropriating money into the full-time liaison line.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Vest?
So are we changing a number, did you say?
On the very first one, 12700, Part-Time School Liaison, $10,122. I would like that, I would like that $10,000 to be appropriated into 12705, which is for the full times liaison. In a little bit, we'll be transferring money out of the part-time into the full-time as well, so basically cleaning up this grant.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you for coming in, James, appreciate you. Well, there we have it. If there's no questions or comments of presentations, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President? Go ahead.
Mr. President, I move to approve the additional appropriations as they were presented.
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded by Councilman Alexander and seconded by Councilman Maple. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you very much. Our next order of business will be to address transfers.
Resolution number 2024-8CCR-19-transfers, whereas the County Council may approve the transfer of money from one major budget classification to another within a department or office, if the transfer does not require the expenditure of money, expenditure of money, then the total set out in the budget as finally determined and if the transfer is approved at a regular public meeting and by the proper ordinance. Be it resolved by the County Council of Howard County, that it is desired and deemed necessary that the following transfers be made within the accounts of the designated funds as set out below. County General Fund Unified Courts Transcripts to Transcriptionists, $12,000. Probation Part-Time Admin Assistant to Part-Time Probation Officer, $6,245.70. Lit Special Purposes Fund KYC Emergency Shelter Care Youth Manager to Building and Structure Repair, $79,120. Cook to Shift Supervisor, $5,194.43. KYC Secure Detention Youth Manager to Building and Structure Repair, $92,880. Community Corrections Fund Administrative Assistant to Full-Time Probation Officer, $13,260. Administrative Assistant to Full-Time Probation Officer, $6,785. Health Fund Environmental Secretary to Insurance, $10,000. Part-Time Environment Health Specialist to Insurance, $4,000. Billing Enrollment Specialist to Insurance, $25,740. Recorder's Record Perpetuation Fund Part-Time to Perf, $2,500. Part-Time to Insurance, $14,000. Supplemental Adult Probation Fund Part-Time to Part-Time Probation Officer, $4,552.96. Public Health Crisis Response Fund Part-Time School Liaison to School Health Liaison, $7,940. Reentry Court Grant Fund Homes Detention Supervisor to Full-Time, $20,000.
Very good, thank you very much. Our first presenter will be Judge Matt Elkins, please. Judge, welcome.
Thank you. Hope everyone's having a good December so far. Hope you have a better December when we get to Christmas. I'm here today because much like last year, we'd split the transcription fees from transcription to transcriptionists also. The transcriptionist portion of it has also been bled out through use. However, we have remaining funds in the transcripts and we're simply asking to move $12,000 of that to the transcriptionist so that we can continue paying the transcriptionist for those appeals that occur that are public defender and other matters. So that's what the request is.
And we also have the reentry Grant Court, Superior Court One, Detention Supervisor?
Yes, jumping all the way to the bottom, both, there were two grants, one was for entry court, one was for drug court. We apportioned the monies for the one and we've used all of that up and there's additional funds that we can still use, so we're just asking to transfer that over to continue paying the additional overtime that we've used. So that was all monies that came from the state, or should say from the Supreme Court.
Any questions or comments for Judge Elkins? Very easy.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Judge, appreciate it. Our next presenter will be Community Corrections Supervisor Dustin Delong.
Good afternoon.
Dustin, welcome.
Everyone is doing well. I have a couple of transfers here to review with you. Looks like we are going to start with the County General Transfer. It's from 11709 to 11708 in that fund. We had additional funding remaining in our Part-Time Administrative Assistant line item. I needed to move that into our Part-Time Probation Officer line item. That is our Part-Time Probation Officer who writes precinct investigations for us, for the court. And that will supplement that per salary for the remainder of the year. Otherwise, it was going to be a negative account or I was going to have to do an additional appropriation, but we were able to move money to account for that. In the 2100, at the 11709 to 11708 is the exact same situation. We're just transferring funds from our Part-Time Administrative Assistant to the Part-Time Probation Officer position, for the exact same role. On our Community Corrections Transfer Request, I have requested the transfer of $13,260 from one of our Administrative Assistant line items. This is within the grant fund, 1132, so this is one of our grant fund positions. We had an open position for much of the year under the Administrative Assistant line item, requesting to move that into the Detention Officer line item, which we have no problem spending those funds because we budget, most of the year comes out of the grant, but then we have about three months that comes out of our project income. So this will reduce the amount of money that's coming out of our project income and increase the amount that we're going to spend out of our grant. So we're trying to maximize our expenditures in the grant, so we can hopefully zero that grant out or get as close to it as we can. or get as close to it as we can to end of the year. The second part of that request is the exact same thing. We had another administrative assistant position that we did not have fulfilled the entire year. And we're asking that $6,785 be moved from administrative assistant to detention officer as well. Those are my requests.
Appreciate your efforts to use up as much of the grant as possible. Appreciate that.
It's, the state encourages us to do that. We work with them to try to make sure that we can expend those funds. They don't necessarily want us to carry that over. It just is an accounting issue. It reduces the amount that we give for the next grant cycle by a certain amount of money. It doesn't actually, the total amount's the same, but it has changes in their billing. So they have to send us less money so that we will receive the same grant. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Dustin? Appreciate all you do, Dustin.
Thank you, Dustin.
Our next presenter will be Kathy Collessen, Kinsey Youth Center. Kathy, welcome.
Good evening. I'm going to start with O3. So we need to transfer out of account 12011. We're going to reduce that by $5,194.43 and place that in our shift supervisor account, which is 11917, to cover the salaries of our shift supervisors. And that is in the O3 account. I have two budgets, just as a reminder. Second, in the O3, we want to reduce, to transfer $79,120 from 11713 to Building and Structure Repair, 32510. And this is for putting Band-Aids on the leaks in our building and the resurfacing of our parking lot. And the next, we're going to move to O5 now. We're going to transfer $92,880 from 11713 to 32510. That's from Youth Manager Payroll to Building and Structure Repair to cover, again, the leaks and the resurfacing of our parking lot and our roads.
What's going on with your roof?
Do you really want to start this conversation? I have a very leaky roof. The biggest concern is our gutters. They failed several years ago. And what it's going to require, the last estimate we had was $250,000. I would suspect that it's more than, more like a half a million now because it's going to require the removal of damaged bricks and then the replacement of those. It's also going to require, obviously, the repair to the gutters. I currently have a fire door for our security detention unit that shorts out because it has a leak above it. And where our gym connects to our building that has, I don't know what to say here. It's fallen apart in the roof area. And so that needs to be repaired. So we're going to take care of the fire door because that is a safety issue and for the kids. And then we're going to take care of that severe leak that we have. We're not going to fix them. We're putting Band-Aids on them. And we have, I think I spoke to you guys about this last month. We are going to, we have hired a engineer to come in and guide this project with the assistance of the maintenance department.
Okay.
I know more about buildings than I ever.
Could you address your plan for the parking lot repair? Did you say parking lot repair, the timing? And I don't know whether weather factors into that, but...
Oh, sure, it does. You know, you never know what your budget is going to have available for you until after July. And so we start planning these things too late. And then we get into weather issues. So what we are doing is we're appropriating this money for this project with the assistance of Amber at the Highway Department. She's been very helpful with securing EMB to do this. They provided us with estimates and what are the most critical needs are, which happens to be our loading dock and the area where semis go around our building. You cannot drive around our building. You have to back in to the back of our building. So we're going to, yes, we're going to fix that. It has also, it's fallen apart back there. And so it's going to need to be ground up and replaced. So that's just part of it. The rest of it, it's 31 years old. It's rutted. We have lots of cracks and checking. And it's become a hazard. So we need to, we need to repair that.
So let's say this construction of the highway, of the parking lot couldn't take place until, say, March of next year.
That's correct.
I don't know whether that's a good timing or not. But does this funding, this might be a question from Martha. Does this carry over?
Do you have a contract with anybody?
Yes.
You do have a contract?
Yes.
That the commissioners have signed? Or you signed?
I signed it.
You might want to double check that with...
I've already...
Alan.
I went, we did.
You did it with Alan?
And I was before the commissioners last month.
Okay, okay. If you have something that says you're going to be using this money, like a contract, then it can be encumbered.
Yes.
So...
That's what we're planning on doing, is encumbering it.
We can appropriate it this year and it can be spent next year?
If he has, like she said, a contract.
A contract that's already signed this year.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, back to the roof. You said you're going to have an engineer look at it. Has he done that yet or are you still waiting for it?
Yes.
So I'm assuming that these Band-Aids, as you call them, is kicking the ball down the road. It's not really a permanent fix or is it a permanent fix?
That's not the plan. The plan is to do that because of the weather and because we're turning into winter. We're going into winter. And that seems to be one of the times when we have some of our most problems, our more serious problems when snow melts because it pulls on those gutters and then pulls them away and then causes leakage into the building. So we never know where that's going to happen. Again, you know, it just kind of a guesswork. But the plan is, is with Bill Stone Street to have this project done next summer.
Okay.
So that is going to be additional funds. He assures me that he is earmarking some of his budget to assist with that. And of course, I'm going to help wherever I can, hoping that I can staff our youth managers at a higher capacity so we can operate at full capacity.
So what you're doing right now is just to get us through the winter?
Correct.
Okay.
And for the safety and security of the residents at that fire door.
Okay, do you know how much the roofing project will be overall? I mean, are you re-roofing the whole building?
We are not. I've had, Pam, how high was the one estimate? 1.7? We had one that was 3 million. And I've had as low as 250,000. I would throw that 250,000 away at this point. I think if I had to guess, just with the trend, it's going to be more than, more like a half a million.
And did you say it is the whole building?
It'll, that will correct the entire building.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the plan.
And Bill's working with you on that?
Correct.
Okay. And Pam, you are too. But you don't have any contracts signed or anything?
Well, I have one for, because it's $172,000 that I've asked for. It's only 100, or it was 38 for the Band-Aid that we've talking about and for the, to secure the engineer, to hire them.
Okay.
And to assign them for that project.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. So with the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to carry over money for that?
Correct.
Okay, and you have a contract for that?
Yes.
Okay, and then for the roof? Is there a contract for that as well?
Not for the whole.
Not yet. Not for the whole roof. For the, what the engineer is being tasked with is the proposal, to come up with a proposal for the entire project.
Okay.
And then funding will be a 2025 issue.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yes.
You've got a lot going on.
Yes, we do have a lot going on.
Sorry, John.
I want to seize the moment right now. Our staffing has been lower and we haven't, we have money left in the budget to do these bigger projects.
I, when I hear the word Band-Aid, it's strongly negative. And it's not what, what this council endorses. We don't endorse Band-Aids. We endorse fixing problems and solving them long-term. And I, I trust that this will be...
Better than a Band-Aid.
The gutters and the parking lot will not be Band-Aid.
Absolutely not.
But will be repaired properly for the long term and, and to protect the asset of the building properly. And I think the roof's the most important part of any, any structure. And so I don't know, but the word Band-Aid is, it's, that's not what we endorse. And I'm, and I'm sure that this will be a long-term, proper...
They're going to repair it for the winter.
Yeah. Well, what happens in the spring after, after winter?
Then we're going to repair it for real.
Okay, for real.
We, I mean, we can't put people on a slick roof in the winter to try, because it, they're not able to use the materials because the materials are compromised. And so when, when you're working with a budget as large as mine, I have to wait until July, August to figure out what I have left.
Yeah.
And that's when I start making these decisions. And it takes time. Everything takes time. It takes schedules. It takes meetings.
Okay.
So, and hiring an engineer.
Yeah. Any questions or comments for Kathy? Kathy, thank you for coming in.
This is not my area.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Appreciate all you do. Our next presenter will be Health Department Director James Vest again.
Hello again.
Hello, James.
I am requesting a transfer of money in 1159, the health fund, out of these, out of the environmental secretary, part-time specialist and billing enrollment specialist to cover the insurance shortage that we need to cover. So, and, and then in 8910, this thing we were just talking about a little bit ago, we're going to transfer money out of part-time school liaison that'll zero it out and put it into school health liaison to help cover their salary for the rest of the year. So that's what I'm requesting. Any questions for me?
Questions or comments for...
At 12-07, again, is that actually, or I'm sorry, 12-700, is that actually 12-705? Like, yeah? Isn't that transferring?
Yeah, part-time.
It's out of the 12-700, which is part-time, to 12-705, which is full-time.
Oh, okay.
That one's right.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Got my numbers mixed up, I think, when I submitted the other forms.
On the 1159, I assume the increased insurance cost is just because you have some new employees and whatnot.
Employees or employees that took insurance that maybe not, didn't have it before.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and hopefully that was accounted for in the budget for next year. Saw what was going on and we upped our budget for insurance. So it seems to happen to me every year.
Yeah, where your office is changing and funding streams are changing. So it's to be expected a little bit.
Okay.
So James, I got a question. I hesitated to ask this before, but lead us not into temptation. On the additional appropriation, it uses the term public health crisis response. So my question is, do you declare whether it's a public health crisis? Or, for instance, let's say there's a school system that in February, they have, and let's say the school system has approximately 2,500 students in the school system. But in February, over the course of a week, maybe 100 are out with the flu. What's the threshold? And this may be a more difficult question. Or we may have to take the answer offline.
I can get you that answer.
But what's the threshold for saying, hey, this is a Howard County public health crisis?
In the past, it was, it was a lot, it was the health officers, you know, decision. No, I'm not the health officer. It's Dr. Emily Backer.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but things have changed since COVID. And that's in conjunction with the commissioners as well determining any kind of crisis. That name, this public health crisis response, was given by the state for the...
By the state?
The name of the grant, yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of a strange name that really doesn't seem to apply to what it really is for, which is public health school liaison.
But is there any, if you will, measure of, you know, call it absenteeism?
There is.
School system that would say, hey, once you reach this percentage?
Yep, there is. I can get you that information.
I don't...
I get you all that information.
I don't know that I need it. I was just curious about it.
There is, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If you dig hard enough, you'll become an expert about that. Like Kathy's an expert about roofs now.
Yeah, exactly.
Gutters, sorry.
I'll misspeak and then I'll hear it from all the nurses about... That's why I hear the wrong number.
Water still runs downhill.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, James.
Our next presenter will be Recorder Tori Kelly.
Hi, how's it going?
Good, welcome.
Good. All right, so I'm just transferring from my part-time account, which is 11-700, 2,500, into my perf account. And then the same part-time, 11-700, 14,000, into my insurance to cover for the rest of the year. That's it.
Everything going well in the recorder's office?
It is. We are.
Excellent.
Stay ourselves and keep indexing stuff.
Are you utilizing less part-time? Or just did something happen and you had extra in there?
I think it's from I, my part-time girl went to full-time and then she took insurance, is why I'm asking for more. So that's what that's for.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Well, there we have it. Those are our transfers presentations. If there's no comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
So Mr. President, I move we approve these transfers as presented.
Second.
Motion has been properly made and seconded by Councilman Faulkner and Councilman Sanders. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Our next order of business will be to address salary ordinance amendments.
Ordinance number 2024-8CCO-48, SALLY ordinance amendments. An ordinance amending and increasing staffing and salary authorization to be paid, to be paid county employees for the calendar year effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024, as originally approved for the year 2024, except where otherwise noted. Be it ordained by the Council of Howard County, Indiana, that for the said fiscal year, the following salary amendments are approved as additional changes to the basic salary ordinance for the same fiscal year. Necessary personal services appropriations have been approved previously to support the required expenditure of necessary funds. County General Fund Auditor Council Insurance, $400,000. Unified Courts Transcriptionists, $12,000. Unified courts transcription is 12,000. Part-time probation officer, $6,245.70. Part-time admin assistance redaction, $6,245.70. Lit special purpose fund auditor council insurance, 165,000. KYC emergency, emergency shelter care, youth manager redaction, $79,120. Shift supervisor, $5,194.43. Cook redaction, $5,194.43. KYC secure detention youth manager redaction, $92,880. Community corrections fund, full-time detention officer, $20,045. Administrative assistance redaction, $13,260. Administrative assistant redaction, $6,785. Health fund, environmental secretary, redaction, $10,000. Part-time environment special, health specialist, redaction, $4,000. Billing enrollment specialist, redaction, $25,740. Insurance, $39,740. Recorder's record perpetuation fund, part-time redaction, $16,500. Perf, $2,500. Insurance, $14,000. Supplemental adult probation fund, part-time probation officer, $4,552.96. Part-time redaction, $4,552.96. Public health crisis response grant fund, part-time school liaison, $10,122. Part-time school liaison, redaction, $7,940. School health liaison, $794, I mean, $940. Re-entry court grant fund, home detention officer, redaction, $20,000. Overtime, $20,000.
I think one of these.
I think.
Needs to be, yes.
Councilman Maple, this is Eagle Eyes. He picked that out quick. Any questions or comments on the salary ordinance amendments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the salary ordinance amendments. Ordinance number 2024-8CCO-48, as read.
Motion's been properly made by Councilwoman Lake and Councilman Cuthbert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Our next order of business would be, is there any old business we need to tend to? We have some new business. Project manager Pam Isaac. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So the county council appoints individuals from the community to certain boards. And you have two appointments today. One is to the alcohol beverage commission and that is Beth Harshman. And the other is to the Kocmo Howard County Public Library and that is a reappointment of Mary Baker. So I need you to sign on this form. I'll need all of you to sign. There's, there are forms following those that only needs John President Roberts' signature on it. Are there any, are there any questions about these reappointments?
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to address is I've gotten two comments, two questions about parking. I know parking is an issue for all of us. So there are three spots on the west side of the admin parking lot. There are three spots. I can't tell you the numbers right at the moment, but I will find those and I will send them to you. Those are open spots for council and commissioners to park in. We only have the three, unfortunately. Parking is an issue for every county employee. We have health department employees that don't have parking spots. We have, we have several people who don't have parking spots. Unfortunately, when the council is arriving, the employees have not yet left. So I know that creates an issue. If you park in an employee's parking spot, that means the employee has nowhere to park. So we ask that you stick to those three in the front on the west side. If, I know it's hard during budget time, parking is an issue downtown, everywhere, all the time. Full stop.
That is a.
So I apologize, but that is the best I can manage at this moment.
That is a pretty expansive description.
Okay, well, I wanted you to know where you can park. So, okay, there is the parking garage, there's the street. I know the street is a mess right now. It's been a mess. I get it. And unfortunately, or fortunately, however you choose to view it, under some previous employees, they have stickers. I don't personally have stickers nor do I want stickers or I don't know who has stickers all the time. So if you get stickered, I apologize. I don't know how to stop that. Employees get pretty testy when, when their spot's gone. And when we opened up voting, we opened up the whole voting side and it was a free-for-all. So we're trying to be kind to our taxpayers, but I will answer whatever questions I can answer, but I really don't have an answer. There's the full disclosure. I don't have an answer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Appreciate your time and your expertise. Is there any other council business? Council comments?
We make a motion to approve this, to appoint these.
Yeah, I think we should. Alan, is that correct? Make a motion to approve the alcohol and.
Appointments, yes.
Appointments? Okay. Well, you've heard the presentations.
Move to approve both of them. Can I do that?
Why, certainly.
Okay.
Can you second? Motion's been properly made and seconded by Councilwoman Lake and Councilman Alexander. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. They are, that is done. Any public comment? On a final note, on a council comment, this is the last meeting of year 2024 and I want to congratulate the councilman, councilwoman, Councilman Maple, Councilwoman Lake, Councilman Sanders, on their reelection and their commitment to serve the citizens of Howard County. Appreciate all you do. I can tell you firsthand that this group serves. And it's an honor and a privilege to serve with each and every one of you. I don't know of any, any MVPs or stars on this council. We have a team of players that we all contribute. And it's a humble lot. And I'm, I'm proud to be associated with each and every one of you. And thank you all for your service this last year. It's been a, a busy year for us. And as I look back on what we've done, achieved, trying to be fiscally responsible to the good taxpayers of Howard County, I think we can hang our hat on the job that we have done the best we can possibly. Figure out how to do the best in doing so is just a, we can sleep easy knowing we've done our best. And I want to thank you all. It's just been an honor.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that.
Any other comments from council members? If that, I will entertain a motion for adjourn, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded by Councilman Maple and Councilman Sanders. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. This meeting is adjourned.